We want to get started as on time as possible because our first speaker is Director Michael Yee from Planning and he's got to go, he's got a three-door waiting for him. So we want to be sure that he gets out of here on time. There's, as I said, empty chairs here, the restroom is across the hall, and there are more chairs in the closet, I left it open in the back if you need. And we have question cards on the table. We'd like you to write your questionnaire and if you pass them to the ends of the rows, either Kendra, who is my council aide, or Barbara Lively, my legislative assistant, will pick them up and bring them forward. So if you have questions for any of the speakers, please pick up some of the little sheets there and pass them out to the end of the row. I'd like to acknowledge that our senator is here, Russell Ruderman, in the back room there. And I also want to thank you for the recording this night because I know we have a few people in our community that are a little hard of hearing.
What?
Yeah, what? And so it really, really helps to have the microphone. And I know it helps for Don Wessels, who is here recording the meeting as well. All right, the way we're going to do this is we have three speakers. Mr. Yee will be first, and Donald Smith, who is with our Department of Transportation, State Department of Transportation, and then Cory Younger, who is Outreach Specialist for the rapid opia death. She works under Citar's Cooperative Extension. That's the College of Public Resources out of UHNL. All right, so please sign in, if you haven't, please sign in. You really want to get your information. On the table are copies of my fall newsletter, and in my fall newsletter are all of the contingency funds that I funded for my first six months in office. I got a six, a half a year allocation, and I funded 13 projects, and they are discussed in that newsletter. Up on the wall here is a list of contingency funds that we've already funded this year. We're still in process, but money is running out quickly because we didn't get 100%. And we'll talk about that later. So if you want to cruise when we take a break, do that, and with that, you can. There is water and some snacks on the back table there, so please help yourself. And without any further ado, I'm going to ask Mr. Yee if he will come forward and do his short presentation. Careful about the water.
Hello. Good evening. I have a list of questions that I, I didn't want to leave. First of all, I am new to the island, so although I've been here 10 months, everything still feels quite new to me. I'm learning a lot. I've learned that your council member, Ohara, has won one of your most famacious competitions I've ever been to. And I know that she works for you immensely. So I do appreciate that she's asked me to be here.
Where are you from?
I was originally from, born in California, but in the last 32 years in Seattle. Okay, first question, status of the Pohoe Regional Town Center Master Plan and wastewater substation feasibility study. We're in the process right now. Staff has been meeting with a group of Pohoe folks to create the scope of work, to create the criteria for the selection of the professional services consultant that they will choose. We would hopefully get that selected. The next six to eight weeks would be hopefully, maybe a little optimistic, but we hope to try to get it done by the end of the year. Then try to have them start in January of next year. And usually a planning process of this scale would take 18 to 24 months. Which is typical of most master plans of this size for a town. Public meetings, within that scope of work, we always include a minimum number of public, large public meetings that the consultants will have to do. There's at least two of them that we would build into it. But generally speaking, I generally prefer most of the planning department staff that have been here really understand that engagement comes in those smaller groups. And so there's a lot, there's kind of a menu of engagements that we would have consultants working on, not just these large public meetings that we sometimes have. So I can't detail what those would be right now, but everything from one-on-ones to small town meetings, to, could be charrettes and stuff, so it's just not one thing.
Originally the feasibility study was supposed to go up only just a little bit past the roundabout, just past Stanford's, that last house somebody left before the water pump station. And then there was your question to move it up one more lot so it would be, include the lot, just Pohoe side of the transfer station. So I'm wondering, at this point in time, how far does that study extend in the Hilo direction?
Great question. One thing you will find out is, when I don't know something, I'm not going to try to give you an answer I don't really know. In this case, I would have to check. That's a detail I did look into tonight, so I'll follow up on that and get that to you. And I know you came from the other meeting, so we have a contact. I'm going to try to get through some of these topics and try to leave time at the end for some questions. Next topic was geothermal funds. Understand what the geothermal funds are, two pots of money generally speaking. One is for relocation assistance, another pot is for community benefits. On the asset fund, which is, actually, that was the relocation fund and community fund is one, and then the asset fund is another one. And there were three studies that were approved, recommended by the Windward Planning Commission. One was for Native Hawaiian Health Study, one was for the Public Health Study, and one was a Technical Dispersion Study. The Native Hawaiian Health Study, we're in the process of working with one of the professional service vendors, ensuring that they can turn in their stuff and possibly be that professional service. So that's the end of words. There's been a lot of confusion, I wouldn't say necessary confusion, just challenges over trying to confirm that they are a professional service company that we can work with, and making sure that they meet all the requirements to do so. So look for that to kind of go forward, hopefully, down the road here. The other two, frankly, although they were approved by the Windward Planning Commission, the mayor has chosen not to move forward with those studies. Although, and basically, they're in limbo right now until, because they're not willing to sign off on it at the mayor's office, we are in planning, we can't move forward, so we're waiting for official confirmation from the mayor's office to basically go back to the Windward Planning Commission and take it off the books. Okay? I can't explain to you all of the mayor's reasons for that, we have to go to him on that. The relocation community benefit fund, number of relocation requests being worked on by the planning department this fiscal year, we had one request and purchased one house for 300, about $340,000. That's it, there's no other request, no outstanding request for the relocation funds. Status, Councilwoman Ohara had submitted a community benefit fund request to fund private security in and around Pohoe Community Center. And I basically have sat on that request for a while. Generally speaking, I wasn't seeing a lot of police support for it, I wasn't seeing a lot of Parks Department support for it. And there was a question over the sustainability of wanting to continue spending, you know, if we spent $65,000 on private security, what happens after one year? You know, it's just kind of a sinking thing at that point, and at some point, is that really the sustainability? I haven't said necessarily, no, I'm never going to sign off on this, but there are a lot of questions. So I am being transparent with Eileen in that I just haven't had enough reasons to want to approve it. I think, I know Eileen has probably had some conversations with Parks Department over other issues like opening up the parking lines and stuff, and whether or not they've had some movement around security issues around that. I remember we haven't talked recently about that, but I know that's been kind of going on. Just being transparent that there has been a request from Councilwoman Ohara on $65,000 for private security in and around Pohoe Community Center, and I have not approved that yet. Is that it for your list?
I think that was mine.
That was her list, so open for questions then.
Do you have any questions over there? If anyone wants to take questions?
On that security issue, if those funds not be just shifted over where you pick up an extra officer, or engage into that area, so you're not picking up a separate entity attached to the Police Department?
The question is whether or not $65,000 can be diverted to the Police Department to fund. I will, I think, answer that since she's...
To add one officer to, say, the Pohoe Police Force, we have to hire five officers. So it would take five times that amount, basically, in order to put another officer on the force in Puna. You don't understand, it's because they work eight-hour shifts, and if you're talking 24/7, you have to hire five, this is the police law.
How do you do 24/7?
We don't, that's why a security guard would be a better option, because we just need a few extra hours on a contract that we already have.
Could we just pick up smaller five hours and get another officer on during the traffic hours?
No, this isn't the standard job of an officer, to guard the parking lots. That's basically what we're looking for, to get some public parking into Pohoe. We have no public parking, we lost our friends. So it's kind of killing some of the downtown businesses. We lost two restaurants already and one shop, and we will continue to lose businesses because there's no place for the equal opponent. And so all I'm asking is that we leave the parking lots open until midnight. Right now, the guards close from midnight. So that's what the request is for. If that gives you more clarification, Mr. Yee?
Thank you.
I just wanted to know the genesis of the fund for this, you talked about what we would do after one year. Does not the fund have money coming into it?
Yes, the geothermal funds, yes, there is a regular amount of income coming into it. Understand that right now, we share with relocation assistance, or relocation fund. So you have to think about, if that's your kind of rainy day fund, how much do you keep there and how much do you keep on through?
Only issue with the relocation fund. We have to say...
Speak up, please.
Yeah, I'm hoping that, I'm not the person I mean, I made it clear, that this request basically came from the community and business community through Main Street. So this is not something that popped out of your brain. Being one of the people who negotiated this plan with Governor Wahai, I can tell you that that was a purpose, that was intended. The fact that the state, the governor chose to delegate the authority to the county through the planning process was nowhere on the table when we had this discussion. It was our understanding when we left his office that they would facilitate a separate community group from the surrounding and directly impacted community to manage this. I understand you're the guy on board, I got that. So it's not too delicate, I'm not trying to make it. But the fact that the process was manipulated, the community has not really benefited in any way, shape, or form as we intended, it was agreed to, and I'm hoping going forward that we can have some discussion with you to settle. And this is for you to...
Thank you. I hear what you're saying. In the end, I'm the steward of this fund at the level that I have authority. I'm trying to steward in the best way I can. If I don't use the money, it's not as if I take the money and I spend it somewhere else on something else. So understand that I'm trying to keep it there, be thoughtful about what, how it serves your community. And I'm learning what those priorities would be for your folks. Again, I haven't made a final decision, it's just where I've sat so far. I will say, and I think it was kind, I didn't mention that my wife goes to college at night, and I have a three-year-old, and I do have to get home to watch, but there's nobody else soon. I'm going to take one more question, and go back to this gentleman here.
Thank you. I heard you mentioned something about the wastewater treatment studies. And I think the funds for that have been approved for several years. And for those of us who were at the meeting for the East Hawaii Regional Medical Group, one of the issues that came up is the fact that we do not have a dialysis clinic in Puna. And we cannot have a dialysis clinic in Puna until we have a wastewater treatment plan. So my question is, when is it going to get off the board so that analysis can take place?
So the wastewater treatment study is combined with the Pohoe Master Plan. So right now, that's all laying out together. So again, that's the 18 to 24-month process of getting that. So, hopefully, that answers the question. Thank you, folks. Sorry I have to run on you tonight, but always, you're always welcome to call the planning office with questions. And if you get your question first, then I will talk to you.
Okay, and next on the agenda is Donald Smith. And I'm just going to tell you before you listen and you'll pick it up, he's from Kentucky. And we're really happy to have Donald here. He took over, for those who knew Sal Pennin at the State Department of Transportation, he took Sal's old job, and he's now the top engineer this side, yeah. And he's got some new ideas, anything like that. All right.
Thank you. So did everybody get, yeah, it's bad accent, sorry, can you not? Did everybody get one of these papers? So, kind of, well, I've only got 50, so I didn't know how many show up. So if you all would just kind of pass those around while you're doing that. As you can tell, actually, somebody told me the other day, I've kind of been on all three islands, and they'd say, where are you from? And I'd say, well, I'm from South Mountain, way down south. And so the other day, I'm out on Hawaii, and they said, where are you from? I'm from South Hilo, way down south. And they said, well, son, you realize that we have the furthest point south than the United States, right? I said, oh, yeah, I hadn't thought about that. So, yes, I am, I'm as far south as you can go. So my accent makes more sense than ever. I can be proud of it now, not even remotely ashamed.
You must understand that.
Thank you. Well, you know, I kind of worked on ideas and really tried to pronunciate, but always seemed to fail. It takes too much concentration. So I figure it just ain't worth it, I'll just keep the accent and go with it. So if I say anything you don't understand, just raise your hand, and I'll try to say it in English. I went to, I actually got to take a trip when, somewhere around 2000, I got to go to Africa. And it didn't take long after going around a few towns, I'd say, you speak English? And they'd say, yeah, but you don't. And so, depending on where you're at, is what the bridge is. Eileen has asked me to come to talk about 1:30, so, you know, she did give me the mic, so, you know, kind of her fault, I ran them along. On this paper is actually a page right out of a Tiger Grant application that I submitted. So funding is an issue, there's no pretending it's not. So statewide, resources are limited. So I was able to go out for Tiger Grant, I do not know if I will get any money or not, but as the men that fell apart there earlier, if you don't ask, you definitely won't get. So...
What's the Tiger acronym?
You know, I was almost going to say, don't ask that, because I knew that was coming, but it is.
Transportation, Investment, Generating Economic Recovery. I just burned it today.
Yes. And so just, and I will definitely stay for some questions. I am a little bit under the weather, so I am going to kind of buzz out afterwards and go home and get some more rest so I can finish out the week. I normally stay and chat just as long as folks want to. But I'll have to kind of take an exception to that tonight. But on that sheet of paper, although it is for my Tiger Grant application, it will guide the work that I have planned over the next few years. So that's its relevance. So depending on how much money I get and how soon, it will dictate how long it takes me, and how much work I can do, and what it looks like. So if they give me $25 million on the Tiger Grant, you'll see that I will do everything on that paper. Now, if they don't give me anything, we'll try and get striping on the roadway. So just so you know, number one focus for me right now, island wide, striping, striping, striping. Payment markings. Well, we got to, there is all kinds of things that go along with that. So right now, I need help. I cannot perform all of these duties with my resources. And you don't, I don't have to convince you of that, you can drive any of our own ways and know that that's the truth. So the first thing I've had to do is get some help. So now, contractually, that's going to take me a little time, but I'm working on it. I am putting markers down as quickly as I can with my forces, I'm using overtime, I'm working my folks as much as I can get them to work. We have made some improvements, but a marker doesn't replace the stripe, it's supposed to supplement. So in this case, I still got to go back and do the stripe. So I'm going to be working very diligently at that, and I'm going to be working to put centerline roll the strips everywhere. So, well, unless it's a high residential area, because I don't want everybody to stay waking now. So that's the idea. So that is my primary focus with every cent that I have. And then I will start, just a second, then I'll start right on down the line. So when you look at the paper you've got, though, the other thing that you might say, well, Mr. Smith, why are you working only from shower drive, downtown, oh? And the obvious answer is, is because I live off Koloa. Right? No, that's not the case. I do live off Koloa. But the top four, four, or three of the top five and four of the top 10 accident locations on the island are on that stretch of roadway. I knew that before I got here. So my boss has told me overall, you got to reduce fatalities. He says that's your, that's your number one objective. And so if I'm going to do that, it makes sense for me to start in the locations that have the highest accident rates. And so I'll be doing that. So I just so happen to live off Koloa. But part of what you're looking on that paper is, and it is scalable, so if I have my druthers, I'll have roundabouts at Koloa, Orchidlands, Makuhu, and Iloa. That's if I have money and my way. Now, if I don't have money and don't have my way, it could mean signals at all of those. But at the end of the day, my objective is to make every one of those intersections safe. And if that's the only way I have to do it, it's either, if I don't have the money for roundabouts because of ride away utilities and all the other things that go along with that, and the only option I have to keep people safe on the roadway is it's safe, it'll either be a signal or restricted movements. So those are just my realities that I'll have to deal with based on the level. So hopefully, they'll progress, though, and I'll be able to come up with solutions, whether they're traffic calming, or short-term, or in the long-term, roundabouts. So when you look at that paper, just note that, so one of the options would be to restrict movements at some of those side streets. Well, if I don't get a roundabout, that's hard to do because you don't have a feasible option. If I only make you turn left or make you turn right, I ain't going to get back to town. Well, you're going to make a movement somewhere that's not safe. So to be able to restrict those movements, I have to be able to put the roundabouts so you can have an alternative and go back to town that's reasonable. So all of that kind of plays in together. So if, at the end of the day, I don't get the roundabouts, that could change those. And it would be some other, something else. But that's going to be my focus area. Now, that doesn't mean that I won't, just a minute, just remember your question. So that doesn't mean that I won't look at anything else. So any other concerns you have that are both way related, that's under my jurisdiction, and actually, even if they're aliens, I'll go back to the calendar, like, you know, overall as well, or try. Because at the end of the day, we're not so far apart, we're all trying to accomplish the same thing. So just keep all that in mind as you go forward. And actually, I have for you all these very professional business cards that I made at the office for myself. If you want to pick one of these up, I'll put them over on the table, you can feel free to email me, call me. I get several, so I do my best to get back with you just as soon as I can. Sometimes it's immediate, and sometimes it's fair to, depending on what schedule is. But by all means, pick those up and let me know now or in the future, if, you know, you're having an issue or those type things, because the paper you have in your hand are more of my big CIP project locations in this area, and then all those other things you get, I mean, your smaller, you know, signs, or, you know, additional payment markings, or maybe some things that I have a little bit better ability to do. So... Will you hire a traffic engineer? I age one. So, and that's sort of fluke. Normally, our district engineers are not traffic engineers, just so happens that happened to be part of my previous experience, so I am retired from the... So I'm retired from the Department of Transportation in Kentucky and had the opportunity to come here and work. Really cool. "Human Factors Engineer and Systems Engineer to Find the Best Most Sustainable Solution to Fatal Crash Accident Problems." So I am, um, I wouldn't say I'm gone. Depends on who I'm with. So I'm feeling much older, it seems like, as the days go on. But I do think that I am very open-minded to all solutions. I think overall, my industry is kind, is making a change. You know, away from the old four-lane signalized intersection, that seems to be all we can do. So I think overall, that sustainability, uh, context-sensitive design, practical solutions, a lot of those things are, are hopefully what you can expect from me. And maybe some solutions that we hadn't thought of before. I'm, I'm, I'm down to the point now that I'm pretty open to just about anything if I have the ability to do it. But the thing with human factors is, are they are, they are the hardest to account for. So for instance, when somebody decides to get in their car and they are not, or should not be driving because they're under the influence, I have little if any control over that. And most of what I will do on the highway will not accommodate that. The majority of the accidents that we've had on this island, and we're at 28, I believe, have been attributed to driving under the influence, speeding, and distracted driving. And as much as it pains me, because it does, you know, and I, and, and I, I wish, I keep hoping, and this is what I tell the boss, "Instead of fixing the roadway, let's just buy everybody a new car." It won't drive any faster than that speed limit on the side road. It won't start if you're under the influence, and it'll beep if you ain't paying attention. Now, to me, that's definitely the way to go. And that, that's my dream. Well, you know what, I'm trying to figure out if it is or not, but now, right now, it's not. But somewhere down the line, I, I think that would reduce our fatalities...
For sure.
...to nil. Now, in the meantime, though, since that's not an option, we're left with trying to figure out a way to lower that number so that we're safe, so that our kids are safe, so that our community are safe. And it's a challenge. Uh, I, I'm not a quitter, I will not give up. How many roads, how many roundabouts are there on H1, H2, and H3 on Hawaii? I think there's none. "Why is 130 different than those mentioned? 130's a major roadway class." So I, now, actually, I'm, I was prepared to answer this one. Somebody, actually, I didn't get back with them today, but they asked me. Now, I have not, over my entire career, been 100% pro-roundabout. I'm from Kentucky. You know, I live in a town where a guy actually got a DUI on a horse. You know what, made the national news. They'll try, I don't know why, I don't know if they'll do this, but go to Kentucky and they'll make a national news. And so they asked the guy, says, "What are you doing?" He says, "Horse knew where he was going. Ain't it bad he was taking him home? It wasn't a problem, you know?" But the, the top accident location in the county of Hawaii, and maybe in the state, was at the Poa Roundabout. I have done an exhaustive study since January the 1st of 2016. I found two, two minor accidents. If I had any doubts about a roundabout, they have disappeared. National rates for accident reductions at a roundabout are somewhere around 45%. This one bypassed 90. That's, I don't know that we can expect that out of all of them. But if I had any doubts, that removed them for me. You know, so I still gotta learn to disdirection drive, but I'm getting it. But, but overall, you are, I think the, and I can't remember all the numbers, you're 75% less likely to die in a fatal accident is pedestrian aroundabout. And those numbers are, are, they're undeniable. And then the fact that we have a real case scenario even makes all the difference. The other thing that I'm, you know, there's part of, you know, I get out on the highway in the morning and I go out and it's backed up. It's a little bit frustrating in a way, but it's, you know, as a, as a traffic engineer and a transportation official, in some ways, it's not. Because when I get up to the next intersection, the reason I'm backed up is because they're taking turns. It just doesn't happen anywhere. You know, before I moved here, they said, "Don't move to Poa, it's the Wild West." And I'm down here, and I'm saying, "I don't want to live anywhere else. Where else in the world do people stop to, to take turns? It's crazy." I, I mean, I, I'm just, I, I'm at home. I, I'll kick down here, I don't, I guess maybe some of those other folks that went down here, we'll keep that story, I'll let them know, it's kind of rough, but... It's kind of, it really is kind of an amazing thing. So when you think about a roundabout and the way that we already operate, it worked. Oh, yeah, yeah, see, I told you, I told you.
You used the term marker earlier. Were you, were, were you referring to the, the red, yellow, and white dots on the road?
Okay, yes, payment markers. Thank you very much, sir, I appreciate you for the clarification. So there it is, the, the yellow ones in the center, white on the edges, and then red if you're going the opposite direction. And then also, I'm trying to get the RN5s on, what we call RN5s in Hawaii, these afternoons, on the guardrail, the little triangle ones, to get those in place as well. So usually when I'm saying payment markers, that's what I'm discussing.
I would just like to say thank you to the ones from here at Puna.
Well, they're my maintenance crew, they've been working hard, they've been working overtime. I've got guys that, that are, that are, uh, you know, working outside of their normal job duties to come and help, and it, it really is great.
The, the hours that the traffic managers have been coming from Hilo to Pahua in the afternoons from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. Why, why is it from 3:00 to 6:00, not from 1:00 to 8:00 or whatever?
Thank you. So I'm working on clearing that up. It will likely take me another two or three weeks. You'll be surprised how hard it is to get a striker. I've done everything with beg, cry, and plead, and fuss, and I, I, I've done everything possible to get him here. Now, he is here, and they're starting to do some layout. Now, they're getting the materials on the way. It'll still take me about another month. The other little issue that I've got is to be able to do that, I have to complete the FHWA-required noise study. So I'm trying to get them coordinated together. So the only reason me to say that is just if for some reason I complete the work before I get the noise study approved, you possibly could be driving in a lane, you're gonna be driving and see that lane over and think, "Why can't I use it?" I may have to have my maintenance guys go cook cones before 3:00 and after 6:00, so that you can't use it the rest of the day until I get the noise study approved. Otherwise, I'll get in trouble with the FHWA. So just keep that in mind. And I'm, I'm, hopefully I can pull all of this together in the next month, and it'll be 24/7, you won't have to worry about it. Now, to answer your question, why I can't extend it right now, the idea is that from 3:00 to 6:00 is the peak time. So because I don't have the actual room, I cheated it to get it in. I didn't do it, but that's kind of the process, is I, you know, since you're basically stopped and driving real slow, I can get by with a lesser standard. And if, so if I open it up, because I've actually kind of looked at it, or sometimes if, if it moves too fast, then that, that's an issue, so...
You said there's a large project, uh, CIP. Can you tell me what CIP is?
CIP stands for Capital Improvement Projects. So if I'm making improvements to the roadway, such as a signal or a roundabout or sidewalks or unless it's a little short piece, but in general, if I'm making improvements, that money has to be in the budget. So they do a biannual bu, biannual budget. It has to be in there as a line item, and then that's the state match usually for then the 80% federal match. So that's what I mean by CIP. Thank you.
You're saying that if you get the resources to do this project, what can we do as citizens of Puna to promote this project? Do we do it through our state legislature again?
There is nothing wrong with you calling your national representative or senator and saying, "Get us this money." Now, this money is competitive. So, uh, I don't know exactly where they're planning to put the resources, whether or not they will or will not in Hawaii. I will not discourage you from calling for a senator or a representative going saying, "Hey, we got this young man down here that put in for some money, you can send it down our way." I won't actually say that, I said that either, so...
This is federal money, right?
It is federal dollars, yes, sir.
Hi, I was wondering if bike lanes are considered part of the CIP mission?
Okay, not necessarily. So if I am, I can or have the authority right now, if I'm not taking anything away. So if I have a two-lane roadway with shoulders, and I can reduce the length width to an acceptable level and add bike lanes, I can do so. So if I were doing a resurfacing project, I could possibly look at adding those. Now, one of the things, though, that my administration is pretty strong on right now is, is I won't add bike lanes unless it's a connection. I'll give you a multi-use shoulder, and I'll kind of give you as much as I can. But I wouldn't necessarily just out, so if I did, let's just say I did a resurfacing job from Iloa to Orchidlands. Unless it was a major connection and/or fit into the county plan, which already had bike lanes or something like that, I wouldn't put bike lanes on that roadway. Now, I want to make sure that you have room for that, if at all possible, in my design. It just might not be an actual bike lane. "How are the improvements prioritized?" Man, that is a good question. So one of the things I'm working very diligently on right now is prioritizing work island-wide. So you already know what number one priority is. It is to put stripe on all the roadways. So I have went out and evaluated every mile of roadway that I have, my staff has, actually, and they have gave a condition rating to the striping. Good, fair, poor. So I'm gonna start with everything that's poor, work through that, and then, and then by the time I get the poor done, what's fair will be poor. And by the time I get the fair done, what's good will be poor. And then, by the time I get that done, I'm gonna go on a cycle. So, and my intent is, and the way it should be anyways, is that every seven to 10 years or whenever it wears out or sooner, you, you retrace it. Markers, two years at best, two years at best. Then on the roundabouts, like for those projects, if you ask me what, how would prioritize those, the ones with the worst accidents would likely go first. So Iloa, if I can, if, depending on how this works out, because right-of-way could change that, utilities, there's some other factors. But if you just ask me which one I'd do first, I'd start in Iloa, because it has, it has the worst accident rate. I see, I told you I'd talk too much. Okay, right quick. Roundabout or traffic light, it depends, which one's cheaper, it depends. And define restricted movements. Restricted movements is, if you have an intersection and you can turn any direction you want, I can say, "Okay, it's not safe for you to turn left, it's a right-in, right-out." And that would be my, that could possibly be my only option. Okay, guys, Eileen has said a lot of time, these are, Eileen knows how to get ahold of me. These are a way for you to get ahold of me. And so really what we're doing here, I don't wanna, you know, there are other community meetings, this is for you to get to know me, and me to get to know you, and for you to know in the future if you need somebody to talk to, and you already know I'll talk. So by all means, I, I really want to hear from the community. You all are, are my eyes and ears. You're the folks that know what's going on in your community. If I happen to live here with you, I might have an idea. But I had you on the Kona side, when they told me it was backing up 8 miles every evening, heading in the corner, I had to go over and get in 8 miles of backup, see. And I'm making an effort to do that island-wide. But you are my eyes and ears, picked up my very official, not so much the same-sized business cars. And thank you very much.
I really appreciate, uh, catching you here. I know many of you have more questions for him. Um, if you want to step outside and, and grab him while he's here, but do grab his card. I can't believe, um, Donald came in, what, May or June, and they still haven't made his official business card yet. There's his name on the wire for you. Okay, so, um, coming up next is Cory Yanger, and, um, she's been doing a terrific job as the, as the outreach education specialist with Cooperative Extension on the rapid Ohiya death issue, which is a great tragedy that we're all going to be impacted by, and we're not really sure how we're gonna be able to handle it yet. So Cory's gonna give us kind of an update on the status of rapid Ohiya death. It's spread now to every quadrant of the island, it's spread to the north of the island, so we have grave concerns that it could spread to the other islands because it can be windborne. So Cory's gonna speak about that and some of the projects and whatnot that she's dealing with here. And I've had the opportunity to coordinate with, with Cory on a couple of events, and I'll talk about them later, but she, um, did a wonderful job organizing the Ohiya Love Fest. If you didn't get to go to that, that's most unfortunate, because it was a wonderful event. So, thank you, Cory, and there you go.
Thank you, Eileen. Aloha, everyone. I'll ask you for some meeting. So as Eileen said, I'm the educational specialist with the Cooperative Extension, University of Hawaii. I've been in this position for about a year and a half, um, still learning a lot, um, but I feel very personally invested. I live up in Hokito, um, and have lived within and worked within Ohiya Forest for, um, I don't know, it's 10 years, about 10 years. So just wanna emphasize, we're a very large collaborative group. One of us that calls ourselves the Rapid Ohiya Death Working Group. Um, these are just some of our collaborators, there are many others. Um, so we represent state, federal, um, non-governmental agencies. And the work that we do wouldn't be possible without a lot of collaboration. So, um, I don't wanna reveal all of this too much, I think a lot of you already have seen what has happened with rapid Ohiya death here in the Puna District. How many of you have seen this?
Turn your mic up.
Actually, just speak louder. Okay. How many of you have seen this scene? 2005, around that time, some of you?
All of us.
All of you? All right, that's after rapid Ohiya death, and one of the worst case scenarios that we have. Yes, you agree? Okay. So that's what we're looking at, and that's what we're hoping to, um, prevent or avoid by increasing our knowledge about the disease itself and spreading the word about how folks can help to prevent this disease. As Councilmember Ohara said already, we just had our first confirmed case of rapid Ohiya death up in North Kona. up in North Cohala District at the end of September. And with this map, we're just showing kind of where the initial detections were made back in 2013 on the floor. That's the light yellow. And it gets darker over time as we get more confirmations of the disease. And this map doesn't necessarily represent everywhere that rapid ohea death is. It's just the disease itself is very patchy in distribution throughout the Ohea forest. Everybody know what rapid ohea death is? Yes, I'm getting some folks saying yes very loudly. But in case you didn't know, rapid ohea death is caused by a fungus called Ceratocystis. There are two new species that have been identified that cause the symptoms of rapid ohea death. One is very virulent, the other is not so virulent. So we're focusing, trying to focus more of our efforts on this more virulent species of oheas. We know now through experiments, one of our researchers had a bunch of seedlings, Ohea seedlings. He packed the topsoil with infectious material and monitored these seedlings in different treatments over time. And what he found was that if he cut the seedlings, that is when they were getting infected. So that is what we're understanding is required. A wound, an injury, a break in the bark is needed in order for the fungus to get in. And having that break in the bark makes the tree or seedling of Ohea plant much more susceptible to getting rapid ohea. It's not a guarantee, but it makes it much more likely. And this is an example of a tree out in the field where rapid ohea death was confirmed. This is kind of a unique case because the bark was stripped off. And in the red circle there, there's a dark staining on the trunk. I hope you can see it. But that is the rapid ohea fungus that started to grow on that surface of that tree, which typically you can't see that. You have to cut into the tree. That process, this one, I'm not entirely sure how long it took. But the process itself, from when the fungus first enters into an open wound until the tree actually dies, can be as short as a month, several weeks, up to many months. So that is a point that I will get to in this talk as well. So just to reveal those, yes, sir.
All the big Ohea have died. I've got brand-new ones that are beautiful with bright leaves. And how come all the big ones, I used to have trees this big around. They're all gone.
So the question is, why, why is this gentleman observing that the really, really large trees are the ones that are dying off? Is that...
More scars.
Yeah, so we have a partner who is able to fly over our island and capture really high-scale imagery of the forests. And from the data that's gathered from that imagery, they can see sort of landscape patterns of what the disease is doing. And what they've found so far is that trees that are taller, larger, older, tend to be more susceptible to rapid ohea death. We only have an idea of why that is right now. We suspect that these larger trees are... They catch in the wind more easily. So very, very strong winds, hurricanes, for example, are much more likely to be highly damaging to these trees that stick up out over everything else. These older trees that are perhaps less flexible as well. And so they could have caused a lot of breakage, a lot of damage that we might not see, you know, from our perspective. But they are nevertheless wounded, yes.
Is there an elevation barrier?
To the fungus. There is an elevation barrier to the fungus. Not that we have seen so far. Not that we have seen so far, yeah. Yes. The question is, can we go in and burn out the hotspot areas? So there are diseases similar to Ceratocystis where you get one infected tree and because of the root grafting, where the roots are fused together under the ground. They're so closely packed in the forest. The disease is able to travel through the roots to the next tree and the next tree and the next tree. So what you see is this radiating pattern, the disease. And the question is, can we then, once we find that hotspot, go in it and burn it out? And what the approach, our approach is right now is not to do heavy felling or burning of hotspots at this time. Because rapid ohea death, it's not, from what we've seen, it's not hitting a tree and then hitting the next one to it and the next one to it and the next one to it necessarily. It's very patchy.
Thank you. If you put a perimeter around it, fell the trees in, fucked them up, locked them up, and then burned out. It will cleanse that area and slow it down.
Yeah.
And you have a chance to, and you could even trench. Which would cut off the root system.
Well, so that's, that's kind of what I'm trying to get at with the patchiness of the disease. Is that right now, we don't have enough evidence to say that the fungus is traveling through the roots. It's really this wounding that is popping up more and more as opposed to the moving through the roots. Yes. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, we're one of the properties where we had sixty-six Ohea trees that all died.
Every single one of them?
And they all, we had to take them all out. And we had to be ridiculous. But what we're seeing on our property, because we have, our understudy is full of hapu lawns. We're seeing the Ohea sprouting out of the hapu lawns. And my question is, what's gonna happen to them? Are they just gonna be deinfected?
Okay, so the gentleman here is describing that his trees on his property, he had sixty-six Ohea trees, mature trees, that all died. And now you're observing seedlings popping up on hapu first. Yes, and so your question is, what's gonna happen with them? Do we anticipate that they will just die from this disease? At this point, I would say it's a little too soon to tell. But based on what we've seen, the landscape imagery, as I was saying, and this trend for the larger trees to be way more susceptible to fungus, the fungus, we think that these seedlings that are popping up are going to be less susceptible. At least that's what we've observed so far. And it's gonna take some time to figure out the long-term trend for those. We're not discouraging anyone from trying to plant Ohea back on the landscape, yes.
What is the lifespan of this fungus? Once it's, once the tree dies, the fungus is a certain amount of time. Does it force us up or...
That's a great question. So the question is, what is the lifespan of this rapid ohea death fungus? So the rapid ohea death fungus, as I said, once it gets in through a wound, it can live in the tree for many months, up to a year even, before the tree shows these outward symptoms of the grounding crown and eventually the tree death. And so once that tree dies, if the tree stands or is left in the conditions that it's in, our researchers believe that fungus can live for several years at least. So it can live for quite a long time. It has several different types of spores. Some of those spores, one of the, one type in particular is very hard-shelled and dark. And so we think that that lends it more resistance to the elements, less likely that it'll be degraded so easily that it may be raised. Several years.
Do you think it's possible that this fungus was brought to the surface by the state test drilling for geothermal off the Ohea County Road and Highway nineteen?
Do I think that the fungus was brought up due to geothermal drilling? I don't think you can say, respect to that.
Can I get a copy of your high-elevation photos?
You should put a map that shows where it started.
Well, this, this is just the, the map that I had before. It was just the, for Google Earth, but...
Right, I've got that one.
Yeah, yeah.
High, high elevation photos. And try to trace backwards where it started from.
Yeah, if I can get your information or I can leave my card with you and then you can jump to me.
Thank you.
Is it just mainly in one species of tree?
Just in Ohea tree. The question is, is it just mainly in one species of trees, just Ohea's? Is that what you're asking? So yes, Metrosideros polymorpho. We have five species of Ohea, Metrosideros, that's the genus across the state. We have eight different varieties of Metrosideros polymorpho. That's one of the five species across the state. And all of these are endemic. And for that one species, Metrosideros polymorpho, that is the species found on this island. And we have five of eight varieties that are recognized on this island.
So prevalent in an area where it's dense with those trees? What I'm trying to get at is mixed species. You know, they found them like in Montana, for example. They would cut an area and replant all in white pine, for example, or tamar or something. And a particular disease would come in and then wipe everything out because it's a particular type of tree. But when they replanted in multiple species of trees, similar to when the pine beetles came in, archeological pines, if they had mixed species, the trees themselves would actually cleanse the other trees because nature has a way of repairing itself. But when man gets involved, you know, and replants an area with a particular species, then, you know, you have issues that come in.
So is there a bit of that?
Yes, I do. So the comment is that the gentleman is inquiring about how many different species are being affected because we've seen in other cases on the mainland, for example, that monocultures or monocrops of trees, mono stands, yes, single-species stands of trees, you have disease take hold of those stands much more easily than if it was a mixed forest. And so we do know that these different varieties have different distributions. But we're still working on where those different varieties are located on the island. And you're kind of getting to a point that I was gonna make at the very end here, which is really exciting work. So I'm gonna try to get through Councilmember Ohara's. And I have five more minutes. And I want to make sure I get to these important points for folks and how you can help to prevent the spread. I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to ask folks to hold your questions. And I do have business cards so that I can share if you want to reach out to me directly. I already went over this. It can be, the trees can be infected and not show any symptoms. Humans can move the disease around on tools. So for example, if you're cutting an Ohea tree and you move to a healthy tree or an apparently healthy tree, you can carry the disease if you don't decontaminate your tools in between. Hopefully, most of you have heard at this point, what we found is an effective way to decontaminate the tools is to make sure all of the soil and debris are off. And then you spray it with seventy percent alcohol, which is just the run-of-the-mill rubbing alcohol that you can get at a grocery store or drugstore. And the other option is a freshly mixed solution of bleach. So we can also move the disease around if we're moving infected wood around, which makes sense. I wanted to touch on this because many of you have probably heard about beetle involvement in this whole situation. And so I'm gonna walk you through these pictures. So top left here, this is an Ebrosha beetle. They're very, very tiny, closely related to coffeeberry boars. The hole that they make in Ohea trees is no bigger than the tip of a pencil bed. So they make these holes and they push out frass. So it's a mixture of beetle excrement and the wood that they're actually chewing through. That frass can get carried in the wind if the winds are strong enough. We know that through our research now. To what extent that frass is blowing in the wind, we don't know that. That's what we're working on, trying to find our understanding. The frass can also drop down, if it's abundant enough, on that bark. It can drop down to the soil, get mixed up in the soil. And humans can pick it up if they're walking through that contaminated soil or also drive their vehicles through that, those kinds of areas. So how can everyone help? One of our biggest messages that we've, we've come to try to emphasize over this last year has been about wounding. Really, the wounding over and over again through field examples or people calling in about Ohea trees that have died and even our experiment that I mentioned to you before, the wounding is really necessary for these trees to get infected. So as much as possible, try to avoid wounding Ohea trees. And I'll get to the, describe a little bit more.
How can you avoid wounding it if you want to submit a sample?
Right, how can, how can you avoid wounding it if you want to submit a sample? So we, we don't sample on healthy trees. We try, we try very much to just focus on the trees that have died. I admit that is, that does mean that there's nothing you can do for the tree at that point. But if people want to know to clarify that it is rapid ohea as opposed to looking at it and assuming that it died from rapid ohea, if you want to know, let me take the sample after, after the tree has died. Okay, so to confirm rapid ohea death, you can submit a sample. Visit rapidohaed@bird, our website, for sampling instructions. Or you can call me directly or email me. And we want to decontaminate our gear and tools. So I'm gonna jump ahead to the, to get at the gentleman's comment about different varieties. So where we have hope, in that picture that I showed you earlier before, it was highly devastated. We still see standing trees that are healthy in those areas. And we, our next steps will involve working with landowners to identify those trees, get access to those trees, and see if it's really that those trees are resistant or tolerant and, or if they're just avoiding the disease because they're not wounded. And so what we have, we have hope because the disease distribution so far has been very patchy. For example, I said I think Volcano, we've had rapid ohea at the volcano for at least a year and a half. And we do not see the disease starting to sweep through the area as we have seen in other places. Same thing in Ocean View. Ocean View has had confirmed cases of rapid ohea for over a year now. And we do not see rapid ohea sweeping through that area either. We don't know yet if it's to be the environmental conditions, you know. Down here in this district, it's very warm and wet. Volcano is also very wet, but it's much cooler. Ocean View is much drier. So it's gonna take some time to tease apart those differences and to figure out exactly what is the reason why we're seeing the patchiness and the disease. We're seeing those standing trees in devastated areas. And then, so we had a researcher working with us who was looking at four different, so we have five different varieties of Metrosideros polymorpho on this island, five of the different varieties, yes. And this researcher was looking at four of those different varieties in a greenhouse seedling to see if he actually implanted those seedlings with rapid ohea death, what would be the variation in survival that he would see. And what he found is that there are two varieties that are very highly susceptible to rapid ohea death. The other two, roughly thirty of the fifty seedlings for each of those two varieties, were still in the wild at the end of his experiment. And so what's gonna happen next is he wants to grow those species out to produce seed. We will collect more seed from those seedlings and can conduct more, more studies with that.
Can you comment on chipping up the dead Ohea that are being...
So just general chipping?
Yes, the trees will come, the trees companies come in and cut the last. Do you want to chip up?
Oh, sure.
Everybody would say, yes, chip them up.
Sure. Yes, so we already have the recommendation for folks not to take the Ohea greenways to the greenway station, correct? Because we don't want that material to spread rapid ohea death. Chipping in general is not as ideal as leaving the pieces whole or using them in a fireplace or using them perhaps as lumber. If you were to chip up, you would not want to put that around Ohea, definitely. You can try to cover it with a tarp and bring it up to a higher temperature and turn it multiple times so that the temperature gets up high enough through all of those turnings throughout the entire much island. And then I still wouldn't put it around Ohea, but.
Okay, I'm sorry, but, um, I gotta, I've been here all night, which has all kinds of questions on this, this subject too. And Corrie really is the expert. She has her business cards with her, and, uh, maybe she can use them on the table?
Yes.
If you would like to get in touch with her and pick her brain even more, please do. Because this is a really, really important topic, and we have to learn how to prevent the spread any further because we're at risk of using our lowland oea parks islandwide, and that's, that's a tragedy we don't wanna see in our lifetime. Okay, so, thank you, Corrie. Okay, ooh, I guess I'm on the child, it was. Um, I am going to transition to my slideshow now, but before I do, um, General Osiris, uh, my counterpart from Puna, the other councilperson from Puna, was unable to make this meeting tonight, and her legislative assistant Nelson Ho is here, and I'm going to let him, um, give a short, um, update from Jen, and why I have to be on the phone. Okay.
Thank you, Aineen. Um, Jen is at the county council meetings in Kona. She was chairing, uh, a meeting today, and therefore couldn't be here. Otherwise, she would've. And I think what she would've said is, "Thank you for being the caring community, uh, that comes out, devotes your time to make a better island and a better place to live." Um, I like to count the crowds, there are at least ninety of you that care, so thank you for that. Some of the issues that Jen is working on with Aineen, of course, those will be covered by Aineen. Jen is trying to put forward, uh, a contingency relief fund, uh, project to put free Wi-Fi in this facility. So, um, that's, hopefully that will move forward. Um, the next thing she, and it's been on the list for a while, is to put this park, this large Pahoa Park, on the farmers' market list so that you can bring back the farmers' market, uh, events to the center of Pahoa Town. Uh, another thing that she's working on is tiny homes and allowing more use of compost and toilets on our agricultural lands. Um, and the last thing is that Jen already will schedule, or has scheduled, uh, a townhouse, uh, of her own in, uh, late January, January twenty-fifth, at six P.M. in the Te Al community center. So, um, another segment of the community can come out and participate, uh, in government. So, January twenty-fifth, six P.M., at the Te Al community center, and all, uh, just like, Te Al, no, no, we're trying to catch a large, large, you cast a large event. So with that, thank you, Aineen.
Thank you, Nelson. Thank you, Nelson, Aineen. That's good to know, and yeah, Jen represents Upper Puna, as we like to refer to it, down in Lower Puna, but, um, because of the, uh, pedestrian, it's a bit strange. The line is actually the street out there, so we're actually sitting in Jen's district. Go figure. Okay, I'm gonna get this started. Um, I don't know if you can see it, especially in the back of the room, but I had to put, I had to put something humorous on this. Um, we were joking around the council room one time, the mayor was there, and as, um, council member Drew Kanuha, the mayor, and councilman Tim Richards, uh, doing the "Speak no evil, hear no evil, see no evil," we wish, sometimes, we wish. So, moving forward, um, first slide is about roads, working on Puna roads. And as you know from your time here, we have very little state highway, the only state highway. Thank you, Kevin, I'll keep going. Uh, the only state highways we have here in Puna are Highway eleven, Volcano Highway, and Highway one-thirty. Everything else is either county and over fifty percent of the roads, and Puna are private roads. Um, so we have, uh, the mayor asked, when he came into office in December, he asked his then-director of the course to start the Puna Road Circulation Plan, like a master plan for Puna roads. And so the, um, previous director started that group the day before he left. He resigned at the end of August, and we have an acting head now. Um, but we're working internally with the mayor's office planning, public works, and Jen and I are sitting on that internal working group, uh, trying to figure out connectivity issues and safe routes to school. Um, and these are ideas that are relatively new in road planning, what we call, what they're now calling complete streets, multimodal streets, skinny streets. We're making them skinnier, cars go slower, they have pedestrian way, they have, um, bicycle paths. This is where the rest of the country is moving towards, and something that we need to adopt here in Puna as we start to do some roadwork on our county roads. Um, we have for years, I've been here thirty-seven, thirty-eight years, used this term "roads" in the neighborhood. I, I am adamant with the administration that we need to quit using this term. There is no legal definition of a road in Limpool. If the road is open to traffic, and it was previously some kind of public or government road, court rulings in the late nineteen nineties identified that it's the county's responsibility. So, that's part of, um, my push, because we keep getting the old "roads in Limpool" thing. No, there are no roads in Limpool. So, um, getting rid of that, and, uh, some of the CIP, somebody asked what CIP means, that's Capital Improvement Projects. Some of the things that I put on the CIP budget list this year, or renewed, um, one was the post office road improvement. It had already been on there, but it was about to lapse, so I renewed it. And the good news is, I think we have identified funding to actually do the project. I'm so excited. I was talking to the finance director today. She says it's, it's second on her list of things to work on. It's getting that money pulled out of this other account into this account where we can start doing some of these capital improvement projects. Um, the post office road is one of our old village roads. It only has a thirty-foot right of way, but if we recover all of the right of way, we'll be able to make at least a four-foot walking path. And as you may know, living in Pahoa, the hoss students walk up and down post office road all the time. If the grass isn't cut, they're walking into a bit of asphalt that we have there. Very unsafe. So this is a high priority for me and for everyone, I think, in, in Pahoa. Also, on Leilani Boulevard, I think there was a question that came up about, um, the shoulders. So we wanna start doing a paved shoulder on one side of Leilani Boulevard. Leilani Boulevard, Kahakai Boulevard, Nanavali Boulevard are county roads. The rest of your roads and your subdivisions may be private, but those are county roads. Actually, Nanavali has a couple more county roads. And I wanna get, I wanna see some, um, paved shoulder on Leilani. Kahakai Boulevard has mostly paved shoulders from the school, Keone Poco, down to, um, the bottom circle, but there is no pavement coming from Keone Poco up to, well, shopping center, for instance, and I live down that way, so I'm constantly driving by people with wagons and baby carriages, and it gets dark, you can't even see them. There's no shoulder to walk on. So that's another high priority for safety. Um, street lighting. Um, before Mr. Yee closed the door on Kirakau, um, community benefit funds, we did get some money from him to do street lighting. So, um, the first project we're working on is getting the bulbs replaced, is that right, Barbara? bulbs replaced at the Nanavali Water Spigot, um, some more lighting in Pahoa Town, and down at Kalapana, where it's darker than hay when you're trying to leave Uncle Roberts and you can barely find the highway. Um, so those are some of the locations that we've identified, and we have the money to move forward on that. Maintenance on, uh, county roads, uh, grass cutting, I'm getting a lot of requests out, um, one-thirty-seven is it, um, down to Kapoko, and, um, spraying along the roadside, herbicides, concerned about that. And, uh, a third thing that our highways division is now trying is coal painting. Um, you take chopped up asphalt, and the state's giving it to us for a week where they have to repair roads, so they have to, um, jackhammer up the asphalt, and we get that crumble, and then put it down, and it makes a hardened surface if you spray it with, um, an oil solution. And, um, they've been trying that on some of our, um, dirt roads at the county man's teams, like the government beach road between Horn Beaches and, and Paradise Park, has some coal painting on it. You could check it out. It seems to, it's not as good as asphalt, but it provides a good base if you ever wanna come and, um, put asphalt down. So those are things that I'm working with our highways division chief. We have a really good highways division chief. He's very responsive. Um, when I do call him, he gets the job done. I'm really, really happy we have that relationship. Then the mass transit master plan. How many of you came out for one of the meetings in Puna? Ooh, not too many hands. Um, while you may not ride the bus now, wouldn't it be nice if you had a bus service that you could ride, that was reliable, that had routes that served us? Okay, that's the master plan we're trying to put together, and the firm is SSFM. They're, um, right in the middle of it now. They did their first round of public input meetings. They will come up with a draft plan, do a presentation to the county council, and then take that draft plan back out after the first of the year, um, for more, uh, feedback from the public. And this is the first time the county's ever done any kind of planning for mass transit, for bus services. So it's, it's a huge endeavor, and it's really important to Puna District. Um, you know, so this is, this is something I've really focused a lot of attention on, getting the word out about the meetings, and trying to get people to give their input. It's so important. Okay, moving on to, um, the second of the big issues. When I was campaigning, it was roads and police and security. Those were my two top issues, and that's why I put them at the top. Now, when I came into office, it was December, and I was just getting my feet wet, and we lost a good portion of Pahoa Town to the fire. Uh, some of you may remember, we had, um, some fire meetings. We called them community meetings, but, um, they were very important in getting the community back together, understanding we do, we are a resilient crowd, and pulling together different elements of the community to make us a safer town. We got the mom squad out of that. We got a great, um, Facebook page, recovered Pahoa. Um, and, um, other beautification projects came out of that. So we had three meetings, one January, right after the fire, February, and then April. And, um, this is the first big public meeting I've had since then, because I've been visiting all the summer stuff. Um, we did recognize the Pahoa Police because that fire could've been a lot worse. There could've been fatalities. There were people asleep in the upstairs above the kings where there were apartments. They acted so quickly, and they got down here and got everybody out of that building, and one guy tried to run back in, and one of the officers had to kind of tackle him, but they kept everybody still. So we brought them to council and gave them recognition, the four officers who responded. Um, we have really good neighborhood watch teams here in Puna, and they meet on a regular basis individually, but they also come together as the Puna Neighborhood Watch once a month. And I've been going to a lot of those meetings to keep updated on what the issues are. We have really strong CERT. CERT is your Community Emergency Response Teams. And right now, the coordinator, Islandwide, is Patty Pinto. She lives in Upper Puna, and she's doing a fantastic job of initiating trainings. They have a fabulous CERT team over in Paradise Park, also over in Leilani and Nanavali. I'm kind of disappointed that my neighborhood, which is Wintourus, doesn't seem to have a really strong CERT presence yet, but we're working on it. A few people went to the most recent trainings in October. Um, and we have been getting the Civil, um, Civil Battalion, Army Civil Battalion, has chosen the Big Island as a training site for preparing their, um, their guys to go out worldwide and to respond to emergency situations, earthquakes, hurricanes, whatever. Um, and they've realized that the Big Island is a really good place to simulate Third World country. Anyway, um, had a great group of guys come in, um, young men, very intelligent, and, uh, we worked, uh, we did an emergency response, um, exercise over in HPP with the CERT teams and the Neighborhood Watch teams, and they were, they were very impressed. They basically evaluated the emergency response that, um, HPP had organized, and they were very impressed by what we had pulled together. So, and they also helped with some engineering designs. They did some feasibility, uh, studies on bridges up in Upper Puna that need repair. I'm hoping to get some work out of them when they come back, and they're coming back in December. Different group of guys, but the same, the same Civil Battalion. So that, uh, that was fun and helpful. And, um, consideration of new police stations in Puna. Well, we have the Keo Ha family down in Pohwiki who, uh, recently transferred property to the county, like in two thousand sixteen, ten acres, right above the new county park, specifically for use as a police substation. And Corrie, they'll, uh, met with the mayor today, and I got to meet with her after that. Uh, we've been going around meeting with the chief of police, chief of fire, everybody, and, um, her last visit, she wanted to make to the mayor. Um, and she's got a good reception, and we're gonna be looking at that. And she has some great ideas about how to fund it, and it may be through, um, OHA's portion of the GIA Tharaw funding. So that's a station in Pohwiki, and then there's also, um, at least we're in the initial top planning stage of a full-service police station in Upper Puna. The police station we have here in Lower Puna services all the way down to Kalapana, all the way up to Volcano. As we know, Puna is bigger than the island of Oahu. Our officer, um, ratio to population is the worst in the state. We have the worst response times, and as such, we start becoming known as the criminal capital of the state. That's not good for us. So we're, we're starting to look at a new full-service station for Upper Puna so that this station can service Lower Puna. Um, additional Pahoa community and aquatic security parking. This is about what Mr. Yee was talking about when I requested him for the additional eighty-five thousand, I think it was. Um, we do not have any public parking except along the street anymore here in Pahoa. It's killing our businesses, and all I'm asking is to keep these parking lots and the aquatics center parking lot open till midnight. It's like three extra hours. It's not that big a deal. Um, so if anybody wants to write Mr. Yee or phone me and tell them how important that is, we need it because that's what the, the money would go for. So that's, um, addressing those issues. Uh, economic development efforts. Well, I had nothing to do with the Puna Kai Shalping Center. I'm just out there because we have to recognize that the groundbreaking was just a month ago, and within two years, we're going to have a whole lot more businesses and jobs in Pahoa Town. Um, one thing I did champion was Small Business Saturday with the Small Business Development Center. Um, everyone know what Black Friday is? It's the Friday after Thanksgiving, and, and everybody rushes out to the big box stores and spends all their money for the holidays. And if they didn't do that, then they wait for Cyber Monday, and they go online, and they buy everything on the internet. Sandwiched in between is Small Business Saturday. And most of our, uh, businesses in Ni'au Town and Pahoa Town are small businesses, and we want to encourage people to frequent them for their holiday shopping. So that's Small Business Saturday. Main Street, Pahoa, whether you are aware of it or not, is kind of our business organization for Pahoa Town. It's been around longer, I think, so it started in the... It's been around, I don't even know, something like, it started in the 1990s. Um, and I want to encourage anyone who is, um, interested in joining to join the organization. There's, um, a lot of good things happening in Main Street, Pohola. They have the parade coming up and that'll be the first Saturday of December. And they also have, um, taken over the Alliance of Scholarship Fund, which, um, is a really important fund for giving scholarships to our local high schools. Pohola High School, Ras, um, who, uh...
And the Booster Club.
And the Booster Club, yes. They also have the Booster Club. And the other things I've funded with my contingency relief funds, um, the Pride Parade. Um, we were the, the Puna Pride float in the Pride Parade. And Equal Pay Day, AAUW, American, um, Association of University Women, came to me and they wanted to get, um, the mayor to recognize Equal Pay Day. So I, I worked that out with the mayor's assistant and then they came to council with their certificate that they just got at the mayor's office. Um, and, um, March for Science. Um, this is important in terms of economic development. We do employ a lot of scientists here and we have, I mean, people think mostly of the astronomy industry, but we have other things. We have the PIPAC, which is the Pacific Basin Agricultural Research Center, and, um, a lot of university professors and whatnot at the university. So March for Science and the importance of science to our community, um, was an important, um, event that I, um, wanted to support. So, uh, Parks and Recreation. Well, Skateboard Park. Um, the Skateboard Park was created by a Friends of the Park Agreement back when, and I'd say about 15 years ago or more. And it morphed out of that into a County Park. And then it got absorbed into the new District Park up here. We were having some problems with behavior perhaps, um, just, uh, misunderstandings and, and whatnot. And so Parks and Rec said, well, if you can't get these behaviors under control and get the kids to stop, uh, doing graffiti in the bathrooms or whatever, uh, we're going to consider closing it. And we went, no, 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 no. So we started a new Friends of the Park Agreement. Great group of people. They've done an amazing, amazing job of getting a handle on things. Uh, we had a, um, event at Halloween that went really, really well. Uh, other things that are happening at the park, the new park, um, we have a weight room there that isn't fully equipped, so we will probably be working with Parks and Rec to, um, add some equipment. I signed on to an alcohol-free park. Um, this got started for the James Ke'ohha Park, I think it is, or I think that's the right name, up in, um, Ke'ohaha. Um, but I have a park in my neighborhood down at the bottom of Hawaiian Beach's shores, which gets to be problematic sometimes at 3 o'clock in the morning. So just to give the police a little teeth, we added that to the alcohol-free parks, Kaka Kai Park. Um, as far as park maintenance, we are aware that, I mean, the shower booth repaired at Pohiki. Working on that Ahala Nui Pond needs to have an overhaul. All these boulders were flushed into the pond after, um, Hurricane Asel. They still haven't been removed, but they're working on it. The new park director, she's great, she's great, and I think that project's going to move really quickly. Then the last thing with parks is pesticide-free parks. We currently have some pilot projects going. Um, this is being done by community volunteers and we want to get that to be a permanent situation with transition, the county, to doing a pesticide-free parks. That will be a building I'm currently working on and will be coming up. Solid waste and wastewater issues. I served as the county's first recycling coordinator, so I spent some time in solid waste, got a little more familiar than I maybe ever wanted to with solid waste. But anyhow, composting and mulch contractor, I don't know, the mayor can either want to cancel it. No way. We can't do that.
Thank you.
So, um, yeah, that was a bit of a fight, but we got a pushback. Um, and what, what was the real problem there was the composting facility was planned to be sited right in, um, right behind the panyo of farm lots. And it's just noxious. It has bad smell. So, um, the Ke'ohaha Action Network formed and they were adamant about, let's not do it here. They want compost, they just didn't want it there. And I have to agree with them, it's not the best place. So, um, D E M, our Department of Environmental Management, is looking for and has found a couple of possibilities for a new place to do the in-vessel composting, which is going to be getting rid of food waste and everything else, um, that is compostable. Right now, we're just windrowing green waste, which is good, better than what we were doing because it kills off almost all the invasive species. So you're not spreading the red fire ants, you're not spreading the rod and all those other things by doing this windrow composting process. So we call it enhanced mulch. So I didn't want to see that go away and, um, we were able to retain that. Used motor oil program was, um, on the, I don't know, it was on its deadbed when I walked in. They revived it. Um, what we don't have here in Pohola is an oil drop-off spot. And so I'm asking them to work on a used motor oil drop-off spot for Pohola, maybe with Lex Prodees or, or something like that. Staff accomplice or staff, um, we have, we had a university master student and her professor come to us and, and give a presentation on the increase of staff in Ni'lo Bay and what the potential sources are. Now, staff is potentially related to wastewater runoff, so, um, there's other things that will create that, but, um, we have to get control over our huge number of septic excess poles on assignment. So stay aware of all of those things. Um, budget and taxes. Oh, that was fun. Property taxes and state TAT, the Transient Accommodation Tax, are the two biggest contributing revenues to the county's budget. Property taxes is now more than 50% of our revenues. We used to get a whole lot more in state tax to the counties, but they keep cutting us back every year, more, more, more they cut back. Um, this last year was, and that special session left us, um, really crippled in terms of getting funding through the Transient Accommodation Tax. We're assured that they're going to fix it the next legislative session, but that remains to be seen. So, um, it is a concern and it was the reason that we had to raise taxes. Um, when we were doing the tax rate, the budget didn't win until almost midnight, from 9:00 in the morning till almost midnight. And I wasn't really very happy with the process. I like to do all my stuff in preparation, like all my spreadsheets. I'm, I'm an economist, I'm sorry. And so that's the way I work through things, but it got to the point where we threw a dart set, you know, um, bullseye across the room somewhere. I mean, it, it got kind of silly towards the end. So I couldn't actually vote for the tax rates that we came up with because the one thing that really bothered me about, they weren't that bad, but the one thing that bothered me was they raised the residential tax rate by over a dollar per thousand in value. And I kept saying, you do know that the residential tax class is all of our long-term rentals? It's not just the indies and short-term rentals and ultra-wealthy homes. It's also all of our long-term rentals and about 40% of our working families rent. And I just felt that was a really heavy hit for them. That probably meant a hundred dollars more a month in rent for many families. And I wasn't, I, I just kept saying, you're not presenting a public policy that I can bite into. So I could not support that. Um, what we did end up doing is creating an internal working group, which is looking into revisions to the tax rates, revisions to some of the exemptions which may be abused a bit, and creating perhaps another class. Um, because we do need to separate this residential class such that we create some kind of incentive for long-term rentals. Um, we did not, as council members, get our full allotment of contingency funding. We would normally get a hundred thousand each to spend in our districts on the special projects that are needed in our districts. And at about 11:30 at night, that budget hearing, we were down to 50,000 each.
Wow.
I pulled a little coup and I was supported by the finance director and she let us do what I asked to do, which was to take a little bit out of the fund balance. So we all ended up with 70,000. Woo! It was worth staying up that late. I don't wish to stay up that late. Anyway, it was good, but we still aren't at 100%. Now, we also had to raise the county fuel tax and this has a lot to do with mass transit that we all want to see approved to the point where we will actually ride the bus. Um, our county portion of the fuel tax can only be spent on county road and mass transit. A lot of people got confused about this, thought it was part of Honolulu rail. It's not. But we had not raised the fuel tax since 1988 and we were way, way behind all the other counties. Maui was at 21 cents, we were at 8.8 cents. And so the mayor had wanted to put it up at 10 cents and then, um, 4 cents, 4 cents, so that we, um, increased to 21 cents over a period of three years. I thought that was too sharp an increase, so I proposed doing, um, 6 cents for the first increase. And the two future increases to get us up to 21 cents are dependent upon the county administration showing us that they're using that extra money in ways that I can support, that our roads are getting better, that our mass transit is getting better. And if not, next year's increase is being pulled off the table. Sorry, but that's the way we played that game. Working on environmental issues, I'm head of the Environmental Committee on the Council, um, which is really my thing. Um, got this styrofoam container limited ban through in September. Um, that doesn't take effect until 2019 and the reasons for that is we have to have an education program rolled out and we have to have an enforcement program, um, rolled out in terms of administrative rules and that all takes time. So giving the department a year to get all of that, um, assessed out and on the table and then we will see that go into effect. Rattoria death, rod, it's been a big, um, issue for me and I have funded, um, a couple events. Uh, Ronette was here, is she still here? Uh, she did this, um, Hunting Loops event, which was great over in Na'vahli and had, um, all the rod folks, I think some of these pictures are from there, testing for rod. There was also, uh, BIS was there, Big Island Invasive Species, for the red fire ants, albizias. All kinds of environmental groups were there for that festival. And then we did the Okeha Love Fest up in Imi'or. That was, um, a really great festival and very well-attended in terms of spreading awareness about rod and rattoria death. Another, uh, really tragic, uh, problem we're having is rat one-worm disease. And I've done a couple awareness, uh, events, most recently, um, a concert at Green Lake with New York Angel. Um, it was a great event and, um, still working on that really hard. We're trying, Barbara has been working very hard to get, uh, a contingency fund request out so that we can fund a little bit of research, a little bit of research that the School of Pharmacy has been believed on and that will help us know what we can add to our order to ensure that our leafy greens are clean of the organisms when we go to eat. Personally, I'm having a hard time even buying salads at restaurants and a lot of us are. So it's affecting agriculture, it's affecting tourism, and it's affecting our health. So that's a really important one for me. Little bit of fire ants, terrible problem. I'm going to hold the question still and ask. And, um, working on that, getting money to bring this, they got an invasive species for the red fire ant control as well as albizia and hazard trees. And I co-hosted with Sierra Club, three talks on the impact of coral reefs from climate change and the impact of oxybenzone, the sunscreen, um, element. They were, they were great. We had, um, really good time. They were held down in Ni'lo at the Alpuni Center. And I also want to mention Hi-Cop. I personally haven't done any work, but I did go to a meeting or two, two meetings, two meetings, and that's the Hawaii Island Coalition of Malama Pona. It's about tour helicopter noise and they're working on some solutions to that. We need a separate ambulance for Puna. How many of us have seen this out of our vehicle here? The ambulance racing, pulling over, trying to get out of its way and realize when that ambulance is racing to or from, that's the only ambulance we have. So if somebody else is sick or has a heart attack or whatnot, they're waiting in line. So we are, in terms of the state, number one, in line for a new ambulance. We almost voted last year, it didn't happen. So I promised the fire chief I will fly to Honolulu with the necessary to lobby for this in the next legislative session. PCMC, great organization and, uh, fully support their expansion and alliance with Ni'lo Medical Center. We do need mental health services. We need temporary housing for homeless here in Pohola. Not getting a lot of action out of the administration on this. They've spent most of their energy in West White. I promise that when that all settles down, that they're going to come out here to Pohola and help us. Agriculture, forestry and water quality. Well, I have spent some time on an issue with the Oma Kaladaria. I know that's not in our district, but it is the first capo on the Big Island. Anyone know what a capo is?
Thank you.
Thank you. Confined animal feeding operation. Um, this is a kind of a picture of the barn. You can't see the cows with the huge, fat, they're happy. They never leave the barn. They just sit there and eat all day. But they do leave the barn three times a day, walk down the center road, go to the milking shed and come back. They never eat grass, they never go out to pasture. That's a capo. Um, the problem is that it creates a whole lot of manure and waste and that waste, in this instance, seems to be ending up in the forest streams that are running through the gauchos, down into the town of Oma Kala, where they've experienced some horrendous flooding events and, um, it actually filled people's homes with this foul smelling mud. And people can't sleep at night because of this stench. So, um, trying to work that out, I made two trips to Honolulu. Uh, one was a meeting with the governor and the other was just the other day with a meeting with Department of Health, trying to get some action on this problem. We need milk, we need dairies, we just don't need to contaminate the community to get those things. Um, working with Aloha Plant Program, that's, um, something I'm funding at Hawaiian Sanctuary. Great classes, um, attracting 75-plus people to each class. And if you want to learn how to be a small farmer or, um, have, uh, be a proactive gardener, it's a great program for you here in Puna. Um, we've also, um, developed a Puna chapter for the Hawaii Farmers Union United. Uh, this is an organization that's looking across all types of farming, organic, sustainable, conventional. Um, so we now have a Puna chapter and they meet at Hawaiian Sanctuary on the first Thursday of every month. Great organization to get involved in. I am a member. And I've helped fund the Kiloana Forest Free Restoration Project. Um, that's, um, one of Malama O'Punas projects and, um, I'm sorry. Sorry, sorry. You should come over and edit my slides. Her name's, uh, Gabrielle's editor by the way, she'll find you every time you do. They have a water plant. Is that spelled right? Okay. Um, that's over on the other side of the island, but it's given us some brief at the council and I, you know, I, I know a bit about water and I have some background there, but, um, water systems, but I asked the question of, how did you, what's the algorithm for your sustainable use? But I asked the question of, how did you, what's the algorithm for your sustainable yield? And they looked at me and went, oh, the state gives us that. I'm like, wait a minute. I'm not confident that we have a number that makes sense. And so I've dug a lot deeper. And no, that algorithm, that formula they're using is like from the nineteen eighties. And it doesn't take into account climate change. It doesn't take into account all the wells that we've dropped. There's a lot of things missing. So we've asked them to do some revisions. Addressing food insecurity. I've been sponsoring the OX program at the Lama Market. That's the third Sunday of every month. They probably have enough funds to go through this year and maybe into the next year, one or two. You go to the stand that's run by the Food Basket. If you have SNAP, you can double your SNAP. You sit in, you pay ten dollars, you're getting another ten dollars worth of free vegetables and fruits. At the Food Basket, we've sponsored Bodacious Ladies, Pahoa Pantry. And we're working with HPP, they just started their food pantry project. So hopefully, we'll be able to give them some funds as well. If you didn't pick it up on the table, is this UHilo event? It's to raise money for their food pantry. Because, interesting data, I didn't know this, but twenty-two percent of the students attending UHilo are seriously food insecure. Meaning, they don't got enough to eat during the day. It's pretty hard to study when you're healthy.
Nationwide, that's forty percent.
Yeah, nationwide is forty percent, thank you. Yeah, I know. But that wasn't the chronic, I think that was just food insecurity. But the really serious ones, twenty-two percent of UHilo. And it was up to the forty percent for just generally food insecurity. We gotta take better care of our college students. So go to this event. It's November twenty-one. The movie Wasted, The Story of Food Waste, will be showing from seven-nine PM at the University of Hawaii in UCP, one hundred. And the money raised will help pay their share of the food pantry that they hold on campus once more. Senior youth activities. Julio Aoha O Puna Makai has been doing some really great workshops down in Pohiki. Kopeh Front, projects like Hats and Bowls. I went to one where we made halpiya from scratch. Lot of work, whoa! Really good, though, in itself. But really great transfer of knowledge. And these events have been attended by from three years old to ninety years old. And it's really great to see that transfer of culture and knowledge to the younger crowd. I did attend every graduation in the district. I didn't realize how in high schools we have them. So I got out there and started going to graduations. What a great crop of graduates we've had this year, really. And in almost every instance, all the valedictorians were human. Almost all. Another thing I've done is fund a project called Success Factory. They work with STEM and promoting STEM at different age levels. Went to an interesting weekend workshop up in Volcano where I got to mentor a fifteen-year-old Toor peek. Great kid. We sat down to have dinner and we couldn't stop talking. He was fabulous. So I have some activities that I'm trying to convince his father to do because I think there's some things in Hilo we'd really like to see. Wi-Fi access in computer classes for seniors. That's part of what Nelson was referring to. Upgrading the Wi-Fi in this building, so we have public Wi-Fi. There was no Wi-Fi to put into the seniors center when it was converted for the fire. So trying to get that done so that we can offer computer classes for seniors. Mr. Vitale may have walked off, but he's got the project all estimated and whatnot. We're just waiting for transfers and other funds to get this done. Art resiliency, the, okay, the organization, Barbara. Self-discovery through art. I was, I was looking at S D T T A and I think of something else. Self-discovery through art. They're a group that we're gonna be bringing here to the Pahoa area and the surrounding subdivisions. And they do a really great workshop. It's medical professionals and artists that will combine to do a resiliency art training. Go Kokele, Mahalo Hawa East Sales coming up. We just had a presentation on it in council today. Help me to fund that so that the school kids can come from my district and get to visit. And we had the Bestis event. It was the Halloween skateboard pop jam put together by this new group, the New Friends of the Parkwood. And yeah, we had the kids all line up, show their stuff. Each kid got thirty seconds, from really small to really tall. Everybody got a prize. You can hardly see these pictures, but at the very bottom is the sweetest little girl. There were twenty-two girls, I was kinda disappointed in that, but she was good. Little tiny thing. And my staff and I just stuck this, which is? And then we had a trunk and treat, where you hand out the candy from the back of the trunks just as part of this Halloween skateboard jam. And just since we got to that point in the event, the sky broke open and it just dumped. But everybody was so happy. We just, we all got wet and we didn't melt. So everything was good. Okay, my last slide. Zoning for Many and Animal Welfare issues. Well, Mr. Yi covered some of the geoframal issues. I'm still trying to get that sorted out because the rules that we're using are not being followed. And so I have some ideas about how to straighten that out. And it's getting some traction with planning and with finance. The property over at the intersection of one-thirty, one-thirty-seven, across from the high school. That was built by Gilbert. We don't know, he's not here, but he got the whole thing planned out for a medical professional building and realized all the medical stuff was happening on the inside of town. Not really the best location. So he was looking for something else to do with that, the plan, since he didn't wanna redo the whole building plan that he's already gotten approved. It's a long, one-story building. Went to see Steve Irakami, we went to the planning department. Then he went to see Steve Irakami. I think we're going to have the future elementary school campus for Haas at that facility. And Donald Smith, no, look at that. No, Donald Smith has actually looked at the plan and at least initially approved a traffic flow that would really work well for that property. So that's going to take another special use permit, so we're not home free on that, but that would be a really great use of that property. Richer farms, getting lots and lots of complaints from, especially HPP, but also from the subdivisions of Naka, Hawaiian Acres, and others, about living next to a property that contains fifty to a hundred tethered roosters that crow twenty-four-seven. It's unbearable. It really is unbearable. So I met with planning department, we're working on some potential rule changes to alleviate that problem. Humane Society and Animal Welfare. There's a lot of concern about the Humane Society's spade and neuter program. As far as their animal control and their animal welfare, I really, there's no problems with that. It's just they're not maybe the best option for spade and neutering. And the only way we're going to get out of this problem of having excess cats and excess dogs is this being neutered. I hate to say it, but that's it. And we're still at seventy percent kill rate at the shelters. That's not very good. Nationwide, it's down to fifteen, twenty percent. So we've got to work to get that better. So doing some work with the animal welfare groups to change up the proposal for the contract, which is coming due next year. The five-year contract will be out for new proposals. SMA issues. That's a special management area. Most of our special management areas are coastal, but also on watersheds. So it's not just coastal, but most of ours are. Worked with Vacation Land to renew their SMA permit because their old permit did not recognize the new public parking area and whatnot. And I think Chris Billtop is here, he wants to speak to that issue even more. And then the big, big thing that came up in the last two weeks is short-term vacation months. Now, I somehow got pegged as being the drafter of some bill, but I'm not. I got completely off-guard on this one. But the mayor's office and two councilmen from Puna are working on something. Because of sunshine law, you can't have open conversations about these things. So I'm still kinda waiting to see what they come up with. I'm reading the same stuff that you are on Facebook and in the newspapers. So I'm not a hundred percent sure what they're talking about yet. But one thing I know will not fly for Puna is to ban B and B and vacation miles on ag land. We got nothing but ag land here. We have no hotel resort lands zoned in Puna. So that's not a word for us. So I have to see what comes of all of this. Like I said, it's kinda limited how we can have discussions across the board. So that brings us to the end of my presentation. I just wanted, this was a resolution that we passed about a month ago. Resolution, something. Urging the United States to seek a peaceful and diplomatic solution to reduce tensions in the Korean Peninsula. We recommend that you use Aloha. So I wanna remind folks, too, that I'm, my term ends next year because it's two-year terms. I will be running again. And there's things that are coming up, that come up every ten years, the general plan. I don't know that we're gonna get it done next year, maybe, maybe not. Redistricting, that's gonna come up. And boy, Puna, you know, by twenty forty, we're gonna have three council members. Because right now, we're twenty-five percent of the island's population in Puna District.
Wow, wow.
Right? So redistricting comes up. And also county charter amendments. And there's some things I'd like to see changed in our county charter. So those are big deals that come every ten years. And be working on those if I get into a second term. Okay. I'm going to, oh, okay, I have a Facebook Live question. That's a question. Ryan Finley asked, at Pohiki, there is a broken shower. Kids and families are walking to the boat parking area and it's not safe. He's absolutely right. And the problem, as I understand it, is the whole service line has to be replaced. And that means digging up the road to go under the road to replace. Also, where the old shower was is not safe either because I mentioned staphylococcus previously, and some of that washes right off your skin. I didn't realize this. Two out of five of us have staph on our skin right now. So if you've got a shower where all the wash water is running right into the ocean, you're just increasing the staphylococcus in the swimming area. So the shower has to be moved back to a new location. So talking to the new parks director, Roxy Walton. And she, she's great, and I have a meeting with her next week. So that's gonna be one of these, I will be talking to her then. Okay, good luck. Chris Billtop. Thank you, Barbara. Chris has asked, he misses the mic, so I wanted to come on up. You gotta give him a mic.
Okay, there's really no point in it. He is long gone. Director Yi is long gone, so there's no point in my talking about the SMA issues.
No point in talking. Use the mic, please.
Oh, okay.
I'm done.
Oh, he's done. Okay. No, I'm glad you wrote out your question. Because I knew he had to go, so that's why I was trying to tell you. Yeah. It's good to give him the question in writing. Okay, I have a stack of questions here, but I see people have their hands up. You didn't, that's some voice correction. Oh, it's okay. But I will see what we can get through. Ariel.
I wrote a question there, but my question is given from what I wrote. It's regarding your road improvement program. I was wondering what the council can do to help? A lot of the substandard subdivisions in Puna, they all have private roads. To help the subdivisions get, have access, have access to the excess materials used by the county when they improve roads. They have excess materials, and these materials stay in the baseyards. Now, can the subdivisions buy, offer to buy these materials and therefore reduce our road fees? As well as?
Okay, so that's your question?
Can the council do anything?
Okay, it's a good question, Ariel. And I gotta be honest, they're using that material, they're getting it free from the state. Some of that crumble that I was talking about is crushed-up asphalt that the state takes off. The county is using it. So, okay, and your other question was, any development regarding creating PMR? Not at this point. The internal road group is making some progress, but not with PMR specifically. Woo! That's okay. Yeah, that's better. Any other questions for the audience? Yes.
Have you been looking through the Ronneball?
Looking through?
Who's ever maintaining the Ronneball?
It is not being maintained, and that was a topic at Main Street Pahoa this morning. They have a, what is, they have a program called, what is it, Barbara? Highway Beautification Program or something? That they, that, you can work with Donald Smith. I already asked Donald Smith's boss about this. It's Nick, and he agreed. And so Main Street Pahoa, again, was talking about this morning at their meeting, getting that organized and doing a much better, taking care of it. It's not being maintained properly. So is that your question? Okay. So that's being worked on, Main Street Pahoa, maybe taking it on. Any other questions in the back there?
I was, you've kinda touched on the intersection over there. That's a new building and possibly a school. But as far as like every school that you should drive by, classes being out, and the mountain parents are picking up children, is that gonna shut that intersection down for?
No, it's not. That's why I said we came up with a real creative solution that Donald Smith thought would work well. So, but it's gonna depend on the traffic study that's being done now. Okay? I have a question that I wanna read out loud, because it's really a question that I want all of you to answer. The county was considering consolidating the Office of Aging, which is at the old Sansan Law Building. And the question is, how many Puna citizens use the Aging and Disability Resource Center on Kino Ole Street? You do?
I have.
I see two.
I have a question again.
How many Puna citizens use the Aging and Disability Resource Center on Kino Ole Street? Two. I see two people raising their hands, okay?
All of the seniors have already left.
All the seniors have already left. Yep. So that was the question, was how many would prefer to keep the office there rather than move it to the old Safeway at Po'ankau?
They spent thirty-two million dollars on that building just four years ago.
I, I hear you. We've been pushing back as a council, yes. I got a question here from Cory. Pardon, is she any longer here? No, she's not here. Talking about the sunshine law, that's a state thing, I can't change it. Leilani Estates, there's a serious safety problem on Highway one-thirty between Pahoa and Leilani Estates pedestrian cyclists, motorbikes must be leaning shoulders, which are extremely narrow. Shoulders be widened by about three feet to provide necessary safety. That's a question that should've gone to Don, didn't go to him, but I can take that to him. Well, what is happening to government beach road? Materials you are on the road are totally inadequate. Maybe that could be co-planning. The crystal meth situation's getting out of hand, it's been out of hand for a while. What is the police department doing? "What is the police department doing about it?" I can't say what the police department's doing about it, but there's not enough being done about it here at Pohola. And that has a lot to do with getting our mental health services here as well as our physical health services. It is a major problem and we need to refocus it because it's pulling down the whole economy of our district. All right. Any other questions from you that is still here?
This is kind of silly, but... Steve and Overland.
A Steve what?
Steve and Overland.
Where's he gone?
There's one at 130 going down, going towards California on the left-hand side.
Okay.
So Steve and Overland on the left, just past Steve and Ben.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
There's no Steve and Overland there.
Totally true.
It's over. There's nothing in the tourism industry. You know, people are actually asking about the R.B. and Overland and why they don't need it.
Okay. That sounds like a Donald Smith question because it's a state law.
One year ago, that was beautiful there. Tell all the creatures.
Exactly.
Okay, any other questions? So we wrapped up. Steve, I see you in the back.
As far as the short-term rental, vacation rental, that you can do, if it relates to the mayor's office on that?
The mayor's office is working with us with the two Pona council people. They don't have something in bill form yet, so there's nothing I can really talk about until I know what it is they're giving consideration to.
I'll call them.
Yeah. And like I say, I'm very concerned with what I've heard so far because it doesn't work for Puna.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, Lady, I, someone who couldn't come to this meeting, asked me to ask you about that. I want to tell you the reason we're acting on it, because you don't want the answer. You'll get the answer. So she's going to hate me for saying this, but I don't care if it's not on that master list of stuff that she does. If you have a question, and I mean about anything, call me.
Oh, sure. How are you supposed to help?
Go ahead with your next question or something. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, yes, no?
On to talking to George Renzel, who's about to start happening right now. In the last legislative session, Ray B. and Governor E. D. told those two bills, two voluntary tax agreements. What would you stand on with them?
The voluntary tax agreement where the tax is taken at the point of transaction, you mean?
Yes, the companies like Airbnb, Airbnb.
Well, we just got into an MOA with MMS or a memorandum of agreement with Airbnb, but it needs to be across the board. And I absolutely agree with that, that we need to be collecting TAC on all of it because otherwise it's not a level playing field. One person can rent their room for $60 because they're not paying TAC. The other person has to rent it for $80 because they're paying TAC. So it's not making a level playing field. That's not good. So no, I feel that the problem here is that the state passed a bill in their special legislative session capping the amount of TAC that the county can ever, ever have. So if we do this, that'll create an extra $30 million which should be spread across all the counties.
No, it shouldn't be.
No, it doesn't get collected here. It gets collected by the state. Yeah. So, yeah, no, it doesn't get collected here. The TAC goes to the state. So if they work that out, which they say they will in the next session, and I do want to see everybody on an equal playing field with that. I also want to see a class, a new residential class that separates Airbnb, I mean, or just B&Bs and short-term vacation rails from long-term rails. We have to create some incentive to keep long-term rentals on the market. Now, people are saying, "There's plenty of empty houses." But if you go out and try and rent one, it's really close to impossible to rent a nice house for your family. And so that's really important. We need to keep our working-class families sheltered. And so we have to consider that. The other thing is to get a logjam at the Planning and Public Works for getting a simple three-bedroom, two-bad house built. You're waiting nine months for a permit? It's ridiculous, you know? And so that's part of the problem too. There's several pieces to this puzzle and I'm not into just tackling one. You've got to do it holistically so it doesn't harm the long-term rentals, it doesn't harm the short-term rentals. It doesn't harm communities, you know, because communities can be torn up with... I live in one of those communities that used to be all single-family dwellings. In fact, that's RCC and OX. I used to be single-family dwellings. Breakdown Cross the Black Line outside of my subdivision, but in Hawaii beaches, it's turned into nothing but vacation rentals. So you never know who's in your community. You know, I moved in and there were families that were living there. And this kind of changes your community thing. So there's so many pieces to the puzzle that you have to take into consideration. It's not an easy fix. So I'm glad we're tackling it, but it's not going to happen instantaneously. There's going to be a lot of discussion on this before we come down with certain rules and regulations. Barretis. Thank you, guys. Everything's going all right. Fine. It's good to wait. Thank you so much.